Good morning, everyone, and welcome to the September 3 Dare County Board of Commissioners meeting. At this time, I'd like to call on the Reverend Sherri Wheeler for an invocation. Reverend Wheeler, it's always pleasant to see you. Thank you for being here once again.
Thank you, sir. Let us pray together. Gracious God, we are gathered today to continue to move Dare County forward. We thank you for the continual guidance and wisdom you bestow on our county leaders. We ask that you guide this meeting today, that all we do will bring honor and glory to your name. Whether recognizing the service and superior formance of Dare County employees, proclamations, and appointing new council and board members to serve our community, what happens here today is important and should never be seen as routine. Grant each commissioner with wisdom and discernment as they make decisions today. Guide their discussion and present them with all the information they need to care for our residents. As we look to the 18th anniversary of the 9/11 terrorist attacks, we ask that you continue to place your hedge of protection around our military and first responders who serve and protect us each day. Continue to guide our national leaders as we, as a nation and part of the international community, navigate nations and non-state actors who seek to destroy our freedoms and our form of government. Finally, oh God, we ask that you continue to move Hurricane Dorian out to sea, protecting people and property from the devastation of this storm. This storm can wreak on our coast. We ask your hand to protect the citizens and visitors to Dare County, especially those who are already on the road making their way off of our little piece of paradise. Keep us from harm in the days to come. We pray these things. Amen.
Amen. May we stand for the pledge.
(inaudible)
County Manager.
Chairman, that leads us to item one on the agenda, and that's the chairman's opening remarks.
Thank you very much. Usually I'll have anywhere from maybe four to seven or eight items to discuss with you under chairman's comments each meeting, but today I'm gonna pass on that and talk about one issue. As we all know, sitting here today, we're in the midst of that time of season where we have to worry about potential hurricanes off our coast. We've been blessed for the month of August that we've pretty much been without any activity whatsoever. Unfortunately, we all listen with angst for about two to three weeks, most of the time, when we worry about what's happening off our coast and when a storm occurs. I don't have to tell you that Dorian is a huge storm, continues. My thoughts and prayers really go out for those on the Bahamas that have just been pounded for almost two days now with those two highs just keeping it from moving. But I called a control group meeting together as of yesterday at 1:00 PM, and we met. And we take a lot of effort in getting as much information from numerous weather sources in order for us to make the proper decisions for our citizens. I want to state publicly that our control group bases our decision totally, 100%, on the safety of our visitors and the safety of our citizens. And we have to make very, very tough decisions. We realize that sometimes those decisions may not be favorable with some folks, but we will err, as long as I'm chair, every single time, on the side of caution and safety for our visitors and our citizens of Dare County. The control group, as I mentioned, met yesterday at 1:00 to ensure our public safety across all of Dare County. The state of emergency has been issued for all areas of Dare County, including the towns of Duck, Southern Shores, Kitty Hawk, Kill Double Hills, Nag's Head, Manio, and all of unincorporated areas, including Hatteras, Roanoke Island, and the Dare mainland. This evacuation has been issued for all of Dare County visitors, beginning at noon today. A mandatory evacuation order for Dare County residents becomes effective 6:00 AM tomorrow morning. I would encourage you, and I'm sure most of you have, this is not your first rodeo, and for those of you who are listening right now online, I encourage you to take the time to make the final preparations and secure your property and evacuate. Visitors should follow the instructions from their different property management companies that they have been dealing with. The state of emergency does include restrictions on ocean swimming due to dangerous surf conditions and strong rip currents along the beaches. Everyone must stay out of the water, as it is unsafe even for the most experienced swimmers. Those evacuating to areas north of Dare County are encouraged to travel westbound on Highway 64 to Interstate 95. There are some preparedness tips and information that you can go online to get, and that is Dare County's new online reentry permitting system is now in effect, and we've had that in effect for some weeks now, where you could go online and get those permits and reentry forms. Those that you have on hand now from previous years are certainly no longer valid. Permanent residents may still use a valid driver's license with a Dare County address for reentry. A current tax bill or parcel data sheet with matching current government-issued ID will also suffice. To review the guidelines for this, you can go to www.darenc.com/reentry. You can also subscribe to emergency alerts via text, email, or phone directly from Dare We will meet once again this afternoon at 1:00 PM, the control group, for further updates. As most of you are aware, there's two systems that are pushing against each other with the storm in the middle, and it hasn't moved, and we doubt very seriously if it will continue to turn, will start turning north until after our control group meeting. They're potentially saying that it could be later this afternoon. So our storm will be heading up the coast if it follows the current tracks. They anticipate five to 10 inches of rain. There's certainly gonna be some soundside flooding. We just hope and pray that this storm will certainly go further east as opposed to west, and we will keep an eye on it, and we will keep our residents fully informed. Dorothy Hester, our Public Information Officer, is to my right. She will continue to put a bulletin after bulletin after our meetings so we can keep our citizens totally informed. Once again, as a result of the control group meeting, we issued a state of emergency based on the data that we have from multiple, multiple groups of weather information that we have in front of us at the time when we make those decisions. And once again, I reiterate that we base our decision totally 100% on the safety of our visitors and our citizens of Dare County. We also have some services that the county will certainly help you with, and at this time, I'd like to ask the county manager if he will address those with each of you, with the public.
Sure. Mr. Chairman, the evacuation orders went out yesterday. Today, the county will operate business as usual. We've got trash pickup going all day today to try to get as much trash out of the system as we can. When the mandatory evacuations for the residents start tomorrow, we'll pick up the last of the trash tomorrow morning for the commercial pickups. There'll be no residential pickup after tomorrow or after today, so please don't put your cans out. Secure your cans and all those sorts of things after today. The county itself will close the county offices tomorrow at noon. That will allow our workers to get home, get their places secure, do the things they need to do, and if they're not critical personnel, allow them to evacuate as well, and the county offices will be closed until we know what the situation is post-storm. We've got our emergency operations plan in place, and so the things that we normally do in these types of events, we're on go. The support group is meeting as we speak right now, so that's up and operational. The EOC is up and operational. A couple of things about evacuation. This storm is hugging the coast. It's a cat one, cat two probably maybe when it gets here, so it's a pretty significant storm. It's coming down the coast. It's right now maybe 30 miles at the most offshore. A slight jog to the west, and it's inshore, and inshore for people that need some comparison is Irene, and Irene was barely a cat one. So this is a significant and a dangerous storm. We ask you to please heed the evacuation orders. If you choose not to evacuate, then I'll tell you that during the storm and for some period of time after the storm, we will not be able to respond. Our EMS can't run. The fire departments can't run. There are services that we provide that we cannot provide, and you're certainly taking risk during that time, and for as long as maybe 72 hours or so after the storm, we'll be in that same situation. So we encourage everyone to evacuate, to take care of their things today and tomorrow, and to move on so that they can get out of the way of the danger of this storm, and remind you that if you choose not to, then you're basically on your own during that time because there's little we can do when that storm's going on and in the post-storm until we know that it's safe to traverse the county. We'll keep information up, as the chairman said, in our Dare NC website. That's where you should go for all information. Dorothy and her team will be putting out information on all the social media feeds that we have, and we'll try to get it out as much as we can. We'll do the press releases as we have information to put in the press releases, and so we'll keep everybody as informed as possible. But please keep an eye on things. Please watch things. Please go to that website and use that information that's available, and please prepare for this, and please evacuate. That's all I have.
Thank you, County Manager. And once again, I'll just reiterate, whatever decision you make, please be safe, and please make some smart decisions on yourself and your family, to protect yourself. Next thing I have, just real briefly before we go into item two, and right after this meeting today, we really have some exciting things to take care of with respect to our College of the Abramal Memorandum of Understanding that we'll be signing this afternoon in a press conference as well. But we have the pleasure this morning of having with us Dr. Twyford, who is the acting president of COA right now, an interim president until we hire an individual, and we're looking forward to doing that real soon. We've had some really good candidates, and we're excited about making an announcement pretty soon about that. We also have with us dean of COA on Dare campus, Tim Sweeney. Tim, thank you for being here today with that. And certainly, last but not least, a huge advocate of ours and a trustee, along with myself, on the COA board, is Artie Tillot from the School Administration Office. And Artie, thank you for being here, doctor. Thank you all. We look forward to this signing right after this meeting. Some really, really good things happening in Dare County with COA. I think I mentioned the last meeting, within the next 60, 90 days, we're hoping to see some demolitions of buildings over here on the east side of 64, coming into town with those facilities, and then in the next 18 months or so, a new multi-use classroom facility there. And then our goal is to certainly grow this and continue to have a beautiful campus in Dare County to serve our students and graduates from our high schools. So thank you, gentlemen, for being here today. County Manager?
Chairman, item two on the agenda is the presentation of the county service pins. This morning, first, I have Jamie Brown to come forward to get a 10-year pin from Elizabeth Ryle.
Elizabeth, good morning.
Good morning.
Jamie, welcome.
Today we, is that on? Today we celebrate Jamie Brown. Jamie has been with Dare County for 10 years. She started in the Health Department as an accounting clerk for five years. She then had a short stint in Social Services as an income maintenance caseworker. In 2015, she moved to General Services as a floater, and in July of this year, she has moved to HR as an administrative assistant. Jamie also received Employee of the Month in February of 2016. A little bit about Jamie. Jamie is awesome. She has a wealth of Dare County government knowledge in how different departments operate and how specific jobs are performed. Currently, Jamie is learning all aspects of HR. She keeps us organized, headed in the right direction. She handles and assists with our new employees, our recruitment, the organization of our wellness program. She's the gatekeeper to our wellness program. She enters all the information. She does a lot with that program, and it's more extensive than we, than any of us ever realized. Jamie also handles our time and attendance to make sure all employees get paid for the right amount of time that they've worked. Jamie's a huge asset to Dare County, and we are happy to have her as part of the HR team. Thank you, Jamie, for your 10 years, and we look forward, or I look forward to 20 more. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jamie. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Next on our agenda is Daniel McCollum to get a 15-year pin from Chief Collins.
Good morning.
Welcome, Chief Collins. Daniel?
This is Lieutenant Dan McCollum. Dan first came to Dare County EMAs as a paramedic. He was hired August 29, 2004. We promoted him January 29, 2017, to a lieutenant. During his stint as a paramedic, he was also assigned to Dare Med Flight for several years as one of the flight medics. So we're very ecstatic to have Dan with us. He's active in our teaching. He does have his instructor one, and so we hope that this 15-year pin sees many more years to come, and the stone color gets to change as the years continue to add. So thank you very much, Dan. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Dan. Congratulations.
And Chief Collins, if you'd stay right there. Chief Collins will present the Employee of the Month.
Yep.
Well, thank you. And he thinks he's here for something else, but I'd like to have James DeGraw come up. This is James DeGraw. He just, when we hired him, he was an EMT, and the last couple of weeks, he just passed his certification testing for advanced EMT, or what used to be called an intermediate. So he's been pretty excited about that. James was hired in December 7 of 2015. During his time here, James has been recognized as one of those folks that is always willing to step up and take on anything additional or offer to help out. And this nomination came from a fellow employee who just wanted to recognize that, that he consistently demonstrates his professionalism, his kind and generous nature, and that he's always arriving early to work. If the crews are busy, in the station where we have multiple units, the crews alternate which one is the first one out for the next call that comes in, and if that crew is busy taking care of reports from previous calls, he'll even go out of turn and take, you know, several calls back to back just so that the other crews can get caught up. He has a high level of compassion that he shows not only to the patients but to his coworkers. He's very self-motivated and a positive attitude, and anybody who knows with the kind of shifts that we work, being 24 hours at a time, having somebody there that's upbeat and positive makes that 24 hours go by very quickly. So James, thank you very much. Here is a certificate for you. This does not go on the front of the ambulance, but you can proudly display that for a month, and thank you for everything that you do.
Excellent. Thank you. Congratulations, James.
Before we go to public comment, any of you all that received an award this morning, if you'll go right out through this side door so Dorothy can get a picture, and we'll wait just a second for the room to clear. If you have public comment this morning and you've not signed up, raise your hand. I'll recognize you, and I do, please come to the podium, state your name and where you're from. There's a green light on the podium that comes on when your time begins. We'll limit your time to five minutes. When the yellow light comes on, you'll have about a minute left, and when the red light comes on, you need to conclude your remarks. On the sign-up sheet, the first person I have is Manny Madiris.
Andy, welcome this morning.
Good morning. Thank you, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. I'm from Kitty Hawk, and you've got my name, so I don't need any more along those lines. You'll recall that I was here nearly three months ago concerning a newspaper article featuring what appeared to be a wasteful new school program called Dare 2023. At that time, I recommended that at least one commissioner take time to review Dare 2023 in detail. Subsequently, after a more detailed review of the school board text posted on the internet, ostensibly providing the rationale for 2023, I found 2023 to be little more than a soft underbelly of politically correct indoctrination. To say you've commissioners would be disappointed with these 18 pages of mostly fluff and filler and photos would at best be a gross understatement. In fact, 20323 effectively has more to do with degrading rather than enhancing education and presents a vivid example of the emperor with no clothes. First of all, nowhere does 2023 mention commitments to mastery of language, either written or oral, or of grammar or composition, or proficiency in mathematics as a basis for critical clear thinking, or mastery of debate dealing with dissenting opinions, all areas of learning that one would expect to be part of a professed new educational excellence goal. Instead, 2023 emphasizes notions such as, and I quote, "respect for diversity, providing interventions, transformational leaders, and educating the whole child as if you could educate half a child." Similarly, 2023 stated goal of academic excellence, one might expect to find something about patriotism of freedom, not a word. Instead, we read about, and I quote, "global citizens and change agents and global thinkers and global thinking and global readiness," all undefined but dubious pursuits best avoided by youngsters who have not yet sampled enough of life to discern fact from fiction relative to global political indoctrination. Likewise, infatuation with diversity that has been correctly described in the media, and I quote, "a lot like old-fashioned discrimination against non-favored categories of people." In fact, diversity driven by political correctness as we understand it today inevitably means we have less in common resulting from a solvent that dissolves the unity and cohesiveness of a nation. Diversity fixations are mistaken elements of 2023's professed attempt to instill academic excellence. Thus, we currently see displayed on television the results of indoctrination in such areas of global warming and climate change that have effectively weaponized, brainwashed schoolchildren for use as photo opportunities to sow public fear and panic. Similarly, why 20323 would include instruction on creation of nonprofits, or why students need further instruction on social media analytics, a mystery to me. Clearly, the reason that many entities are nonprofit is because they don't produce anything of value, and often public, and there are often public nuisances, as in the case of several environmental activist groups. As to social media, students would profit from avoiding social media and not wasting their time sharpening their already superfluous texting skills. Now, Mr. Chairman, in view of the seriousness of the observations I've made so far, I respectfully request that you have Bobby add three minutes to the clock so that you can learn the rest of this sorry story. Will you do that, please?
I'm not opposed to that. Is my fellow board member opposed to that? We're willing to hear you out, man.
All right. Thank you very much. Probably take two minutes, but. Now, Dare 2023 admirally professes, and I quote, "learning from mistakes of the past." However, nowhere does 2023 identify what the mistakes of the past are that are being remedied, or what problems are being solved, or alternative solutions considered that support decisions made, all of which are essentialities of problem-solving. Coincidentally, the U.S. News &amp; World Report recently stated, and I quote, "National tests show little to no gains in math reading for U.S. students." Now, were 2023 simply fill a material for a newspaper or a magazine article rather than a county school document? I might have overlooked the comment that I'm gonna make now. However, readers of 2023 will probably wonder what standard of excellence really exists after finding errors in the 18-page document such as, and I quote, "healthy breakfasts, healthy food options, healthy lifestyle choices, and other healthy citations." However, food's not healthy. Folks, food is dead. Food can be, food can be healthful, however. And separately, I support, suspect readers would find embarrassing lack of subject-verb-number agreement in a school-published document. Now, much more can be said about additional 2023 deficiencies. Instead, I suggest that a list of platitudes, generalities, and aspirations plucked from 2023, and not mentioned previously, for example, digital storytelling, be evaluated in terms of why children are in school, which is to... of why children are in school, which is to learn to find truth. Recognizing that children did not get a second chance at a 12-year education, the board may want to claw back the portion of nearly $700,000 added to this year's school budget that was allotted to Dare 2023 until something more scrutable and sensible is offered, including instilling in students a lifelong fidelity to truth. It should not take an advanced academic degree to practice such common sense. And with that, I thank you very much. And I'll leave a copy of what I've just said with Cheryl and Bobby and any others you should wish.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Manny.
I would love a copy.
Yeah, I would love a copy of that as well.
I want to. Thank you.
Thank you, Manny. Appreciate those comments.
Next is Kelly Harmon.
Good morning, Kelly.
Good morning, Commissioners. How are you?
Fine.
So, I am here because I was asked to come up and speak about a veteran claims clinic. I have spoken to some of you all offline about this, but I guess it needs to be a matter of the public record. So, I'm here to talk about an initiative that we're currently in the process of doing with the North Carolina State Department of Military and Veteran Affairs. So, whenever I was out there a couple of months ago for the Outstanding Combat Female Veteran thing, I sat down with the secretary and we talked about doing a military and veterans claims clinic. One has not been hosted in our area. So, this claims clinic is where veterans come out and have the opportunity to meet with the people who actually make the decision on their claims. So, these people can either approve or deny on the spot claims that have been in the process and have possibly been being disputed for years. So, it's better than an appeals process because you get to look someone in the face and talk about why your, why your appeal should be approved and why your disability benefit should be approved on the spot. Now, the one thing that we were talking about during this process is that it will bring in over 1,000 people from states, from other states that surround us. So, we're talking about a 12 to 24-hour radius, driving radius around Dare County that people will be coming in. And I know that that seems like a large influx in veterans for one, for one event, but we're looking at doing it in the off-season, so I'm here to ask you for your support for that. I have already spoken with Ms. B. Bassnight, the Chair of the Dare, of the Dare County Board of Education, about utilizing one of our high schools because our high schools can accommodate 300 to 400 people inside with seats. So, that way, as people are waiting to be seen by providers, they'll actually have AC'd areas to sit in as well as schools. So, I've, I have made contact and started talking to Russ Gerganus, who is the Dare County School Board's Facilities Director. So, he is actually a veteran himself and is very in support of this initiative as well. I've spoken with Sheriff Doughty about providing the, about providing the support for, as far as the physical aspect and security is concerned. And the police chiefs are willing to support that as well because it will be a three-day from Friday to Sunday event. So, that's a lot of manpower that will be needed from our first responders. So, I have spoken to all of them and they're willing to work for it. Now, I'm here to speak to you and ask you for your support as well. Do you have any questions or anything for me that I can kind of clarify?
Kelly, thank you. Kelly reached out to me about this program and hosted it in Dare. And I, certainly being a veteran, I'm very, very much in support of this. And I would hope that my board would certainly support it as well. And I would certainly open it up for any questions that you may have of Kelly.
Yeah, I was just going to, hi, Kelly. Just pursuing the question of how many potential claimants might we see? I heard you say 1,000, but I'm wondering if it could even be higher than that?
It could be. So, they said on average, we should anticipate between 1,000 to 1,500, but it could be higher than that as well. With the expansion of our veteran workshops here in the Outer Banks, we've actually developed really good partnerships with a lot of the hotels as well. So, once I get the approval from you all that you'll also support this, I do intend to talk to them about getting reduced rates in the January timeframe. So, we would be looking at a time when the school's closed on a Friday as well as in the off-season. So, it would be a time when we could support that, that amount of people.
Kelly, just a question.
Yes, sir.
Did, you indicated that the veterans could come who have current claims in or to the VA?
Yes.
And that they can present those claims again to somebody face-to-face, and those persons right there on the spot can decide yes or no?
Correct. So, they'll actually be speaking with the decision-makers and they'll have PAs on-site to evaluate those claims as well in case there's not enough documentation to support them.
Right. So, some folks that have been waiting for some kind of services or rate changes and how much they are, they're due, can get those decisions made right then?
Correct.
Well, that's a no-brainer.
That's awesome. I mean, that is critical.
Super.
Kelly, also, I encourage you to reach out to the Restaurant Association for like discounts to the veterans and so forth and partner with those guys, as you will. I've already done with the.
I wonder if Sugar Creek would be interested?
Of course we would.
Does anybody know that?
We give a military discount.
Yes, you do already give a military discount. We're very thankful for that, Commissioner.
And what we can, you plan on doing this? Do you have any idea?
So, we've looked at the calendar and the beginning of January, our students actually don't go back to school until January 6th. So, either the first week in January, or I'm going to submit to alternate dates as well. I'm just working with Russ to figure out which one, what the other dates would be. But because we're working with state employees, you know, they're a little protective of their time, so we just have to work it out. I have to submit three dates that Dare County can support it, and I'm working with Russ to find those three dates. But I do bear in mind that, you know, our, our entire environment, our community is very reliant on tourism, and I'm very respectful of that. So, it will not be during one of our peak weekends or anything where, that would put an extra strain on our emergency personnel in our community.
I will tell you, this, they backed up the wedding association from Martin Luther King's birthday weekend. So, that weekend would probably be open for you guys if you were to entertain that time. It also gives you a three-day weekend, which answers your problem of being, you know, cautious of their time.
That'd be great.
Is that in January?
Yes, January.
Okay. Anyone else?
I would just like to say first and foremost, thank you for your service and also thank you for taking the helm on this. It's a fantastic project. And I'd like to make a motion to approve support for the Veterans Claims Clinic that you're doing.
Second.
There's, there's a motion on the floor then to, from Commissioner Tobin, to support the Veterans Claim Clinic and also by, it's seconded by the Vice Chair. I'm opening the floor for discussion because one of the things, Kelly, you didn't, didn't say, and I'm, I'm gonna work to try to help you with this. And I think there's some monetary help that you might like to have for snacks and that type of thing. And I think it was within, what, the $500 range or so?
We were looking at about that. So, we, we would just want to provide snacks for the veterans who are there waiting. They'll be waiting to be seen by the PAs, of course. They'll take their place in line and sit down like you would at any doctor's office. So, we're looking at providing snacks and things so that people don't become hangry. I, I'm a victim of that myself. We just want to keep them fed.
And I, and I think that would, that would certainly be as a support on our part that we could take from our contingency account. I mean, 500 bucks is, is a drop in the bucket as far as I'm concerned to help such a worthy cause.
Yeah, and you can put that in the motion.
If, if you're willing to amend that motion and the second's willing to approve that. So, we'll add that to the motion. Commissioner, count.
Kelly, can you tell us a little bit about your committee and who's going to be the manpower?
So, there, we actually won't need to provide a lot of manpower. The only manpower we'll have are volunteers showing people where the bathrooms are, showing people where to wait in line, and the VFW will be providing that. So, I'm going to be the Chair of that event committee. And then we have other vets. Some of you all probably know Fred Lamb. He's going to be joining me on that committee. Bo Simpson, Carl Ryber, Rick Probst, names that all of you all know from being so active and engaged in our veteran community. It will be the leadership of the Veterans of Foreign Wars Post, which I'm the commander of. So, our post is picking up that role and will handle all of the manpower, and what's not provided by our post will be provided by the state.
What's your reading on the state buy-in? Are they all in?
Yeah, they actually told me that they've been wanting to do one out here and haven't known how to get started. I don't think they realized.
They contacted the right person. Great work, Kelly, on your part.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any, any further discussion?
Yeah, let me, Kelly, first of all, as always, thank you for your service, not only in the service you provided for our, while you were in the service in our military, but also for the service you've provided to our citizens after you've been out. You have been an outstanding member of our community, outstanding member of our veterans. And I thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner House. I'm just trying to keep up with you all.
All right. Yes, sir, Commissioner Ross.
Two quick ones. Is there anything else we can do, specific actions we can take to help you, Kelly? Because we want to do it. You can tell that right now.
So, at this time, having your support is bigger than you realize. You know, we're very blessed to live in Dare County because you all are such a supportive board, and I, I would love a letter from you just stating your support, and that would be fabulous if you could do that. I would like to add that into all of the paperwork that I'm submitting to the state.
Absolutely.
Question two.
Go ahead.
If you've got or expect more than 1,000 people, is the 500 enough? Will that help you enough?
So, if not, the VFW does not mind to pick up that, to pick up that cost. You know, we raise money specifically to help veterans, and veterans who are showing up to a claims clinic need our help.
I have a comment.
Yes, sir.
If it's, it's a fringe season event, you might want to think about going to the tourist bureau too.
Right.
Because they, they have monies for supporting fringe season events.
You know, I never say no to free money.
Have you reached out to?
And the gentleman to my left can help you with that. I mean, to my right can help you with that. Your left, your left, my right.
Did you see him hide from me?
Yeah, I saw him. Go ahead, Commissioner.
Kelly, have you reached out to Social Services or any relevant Dare County services for education's sake, maybe to help you?
Well, as far as reaching out to county services, I have not. I wanted to talk to you all before talking to other county, county services and make sure that I had your support and you were aware of what was going on before reaching out to your personnel. So, I have spoken to, of course, all of the outlying organizations, and I'm going to observe a veteran claims clinic in Cary on September the 13th. So, I'll be out there as well as the rest of the team that's helping to put this on. We'll be out there observing and attending that claims clinic so that we can see firsthand how it will operate and how it needs to operate so we can make sure ours is the best.
As having family members who've been in the military and go through the Veterans Administration for a lot of different medical problems, I can definitely see where this would be a absolute godsend to a lot of people, so most definitely.
Absolutely. I'll tell you a quick horror story. My dad was in the Second World War in the Army, landed in Normandy. Came home, his brother-in-law talked to him about joining the Marine Corps to pick up an extra few bucks. Lo and behold, his unit was called to the Korean conflict, and he was on the front lines in Korea. Dad, six years ago at age 90, took me three years with the Veterans Administration to get him the $300 burial that he was due. Three years.
I don't know.
Kenny, manager, you had something you wanted to say?
Well, I don't know if you all are aware of this or not, but Peak Resources actually isn't taking any more veterans after we worked really hard to get that contract because the Department of Veteran Affairs has not been paying them. So, if you would like to write some kind of letter to, we reached out to Tom Tillis's office because they did help to get it initiated as well as Walter Jones, and he, and he was, he told us that he was not getting a response from the Department of Veteran Affairs. So, now we've started reaching out to Richard Burr's office as well to help with that because veterans are being denied part away.
Wow.
Just one thing. Call me if you need something. And our Veterans Affairs Coordinator at Social Services, please get her in.
She's fabulous.
Yep, she is, and she can help you promote this and make sure she's sending people to the right place.
And she has been brought up to speed where Patty is absolutely wonderful. You all did a great job hiring her, and she's very, very helpful. Thank you.
Let us know how we can help you.
Thank you so much.
Kelly, let me mention this. Give me a call if you will. I will check. I know that there's a grants meeting next Monday, and I might need to get some paperwork in, but let me have some conversation with the Director of the Visitors Bureau.
Perfect.
And I'll see what they can do to help.
Thank you so much.
Turn them on.
All right. With that being said, there's a motion on the floor. Those in favor of that motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign. Motion carried unanimously.
Thank you so much, gentlemen.
Congratulations, Kelly.
Great job, Kelly.
Now, is there one function coming up that you'd like to make a public announcement about?
If, heaven, heaven forbid we get hit by this hurricane, so God's willing, we will have our 9/11 ceremony, God willing. So, if you all could please come out and attend, we have a speaker. His name is Joe Morabito, and he'll be speaking about his experience as an Alexandria Fire Department firefighter who responded to the Pentagon on that day and continued going back for the days following that as well. And he'll be talking about what it was like to actually be there and to be a part of something so monumental in our nation's history.
And that will be held at?
The Soundside Event Site at 5:30 PM on September the 11th, which is this, not tomorrow Wednesday, but the following Wednesday. So, I would love for you all to attend, please. That would be great. And thank you all for always partnering with the VFW to sponsor that, the Dare County Veterans Advisory Council, the VFW, and the town of Nagseth.
Thank you so much, Kelly.
Thank you, gentlemen.
See, I told you it'd be easy.
It's never easy to speak in front of people.
Thank you so much.
That's all the public comment I have on the sign-up sheet. Anyone else like to speak to public comment? Any public comment in Buckston?
Yes, we have two speakers. Our first speaker is Bob Davis.
Welcome, Mr. Davis.
Thank you, sir. Thank you for this opportunity, Mr. President and Board of Commissioners. I sent you folks an email on August 19th. I refer to that email. It deals with the beach access, public beach access at the National Seashore. You know, about early in 2000, National Audubon came through here, the whole suitcase full of information and studies about how human beings had affected the life cycle of the piping plover, which is a bird that's protected on the Endangered Species Act. Everything that they, that they talked about all implied that human beings were the problem, and if we removed human beings from the beaches, the piping plovers would be successful. We didn't know much about this thing, so we listened to the expert advice from the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service who agreed completely with the Audubon position. So, we needed protection, and the plovers, of course, being protected under the ESA were primary target. They also wanted protection from the other birds that followed them that nested on our beaches. Well, there's protection and there's protection. Think a, a primary school with a bunch of little kids and they have a playground, and there's a busy street right next to it, no fence, but you have that situation, and the township is concerned about terrorism. So, they have hired guards inside, armed, armed policemen. And on the roof, they have hired a big SWAT team up there with sniper scopes and rifles, and, and they protect the kids from terrorism. Well, each year, they'd write a report about how good a job they did, but, you know, unfortunately in the report, they had to mention about two or three kids that ran out in the street and got killed every year, and this happens every year. But every year, they write a report about how good a job they did protecting against terrorism. Well, every game has got rules to it, and there's Well, every game has got rules to it, and there's targets and penalties and everything else. Well, in football, you've got to advance the ball 10 yards, and you have four downs to do. If you don't do that, you lose out. Well, there's rules regarding piping plovers, and these are set under the ESA by the Food Fish and Wildlife Service. And those rules are that the federal government and all the federal agencies must work to provide for the recovery of that species. It's not about guaranteeing a pair of birds on the beach, or five pair, or whatever. It's about how successful they are in reproducing, and the success is measured by what they call a fledge rate, which is the number of chicks that fledge successfully per pair. They get, they fly, they become part of the flock. The targets that are set under that are one and a half fledges per chick, one and a half chick fledges per pair to recover the species, and one and a quarter fledged chicks per pair to maintain the same quantity. So, we've had 15 years of observing what's happened with these closures, throwing people off the beach, and some of these closures are as large as 1,000 meters. That's 1,100 yards. You can't even, you know, if I'm standing at the end of a football field, and I've got a tennis ball on one hand and a golf ball on the other, and you take, you stand not at the end of the field, but at the end of the 11 fields away, you're not going to see that bird. You're not going to see anything. So, we've had 15 years of observing what's happened on our beaches, and we find that the fledge rate is, after all this closure, is 0.6 fledges per pair. That's 6/10 fledge per pair. They're not even getting to one. They haven't, they're halfway towards maintaining the flock. And if you look at the same data before these beaches were closed, you have the same number, 0.6 fledge per pair. We haven't protected those things at all. It's the same as before. So, why close all these beaches? So, these closures amount to nothing but a fraud. Every year, they get up and put these pre-nesting closures out and lure these birds to unproductive We think it's an injustice, and we ask that the Board contact our legislature in Washington to create legislation to fix this. Going to the Park Service isn't going to do it. They're like the SWAT team. They've got a job, and they're doing a good job at it, but it's not fixing the problem. Thank you. Any questions?
Thank you, Mr. Davis. No, sir, not this time. Thank you.
I refer to that communication for your thought and action.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Barbara Ackley.
Thank you. Thank you for hearing me today. I'm Barbara Ackley from Buxton, and we live here, and we enjoy the National Seashore. Remembering that the really name of it is Cape Hatteras National Seashore Recreational Area. Our use of the beach as a recreational area has been severely curtailed. I'm speaking because I've gotten to an age where I cannot walk a beach very far. I might walk along the edge a little bit, but I have breath problems, I have mobility problems, and I might point out that I have left the year 80 behind, and Bob is approaching 90 this year. We enjoy the beach, we enjoy fishing, we enjoy being there, but we want to be there. And there are sections that have been turned. Half of our seashore has been turned into pedestrian areas, vehicle-free areas. These are places that we cannot go. We cannot go to places like the Hatteras Inlet, the Ocracoke Side, which was a favorite place of ours, but that's closed. I'm not talking summer. People think of a beach as summer. I'm talking year-round, and it's in the winter that my breathing is better, that we can do a few more things. I can walk a little further, but if you know, if you know, for instance, the Ocracoke Point, it's too far for me to walk, I need to have a vehicle to get there. There is no, there are no other people using it, as it's sometimes called, as a place where they can be and have silence and everything. They're not even there, but I would like to be there once in a while. We like South Beach in Buxton. They've just put in a nice parking lot so that people can park their cars there and walk the beach. It's a long beach to the water, and there's no way I could do it. Most people wouldn't choose to walk in that hot sand and drag all their equipment that you need, fishing poles, and whatever it is you need for kids. It's a useless place. It's closed for miles, and I see no point. That that can't be opened. Understand if there are birds there, that's fine, but I also would hearken into what Bob said, only the plovers are required to be taken care of. All the other things are NPS policies. Any shorebird has to be protected. Uh-uh, not by the law. The plovers have been very unsuccessful. In the last five years, there have been 12 birds that actually flew away from the... I hear you.
From the fledges.
From the few, from the few pairs that were there. It takes many pairs because out on the point where they, now they go, is where, is an area that it washes away the nests. It washes away the young birds. What's happened is not scientific. They are using science, but it is not scientific as we have seen it here. Science is facts. We gather facts, and this is what our experience has been. And I plead with you, please, think of all the people in the county and the visitors who would like to be able to get to those beaches that are now where we're not allowed to go in a vehicle. And this is all year long. Has nothing to do with birds, has nothing to do with hordes of people. The hordes of people are here in the summertime and can't use those places, and it means, we noticed over this weekend and last weekend, cars parked so you could not open two car doors at the same time. I mean, this is ridiculous. I ask you, please, do what you can, through the political system, whatever it has to be, to help us now that we've had the experience to prove this theory did not work.
Thank you, Ms. Ackley. Appreciate your comment.
No further comments, Buxton.
Senator Chairman, we close the public comment, and we move on to item five on the agenda, and Sheila Davis is here to talk to us about Suicide Prevention Awareness Chalk Talk Program.
Good morning, Sheila.
Good morning, Chairman, Board. Thank you so much for adding us to the agenda this morning. September marks the month recognizing suicide prevention awareness, and we were contacted late last week by Trillium, who is announcing a campaign for the entire month called Chalk Talk. It's basically to help raise awareness on suicide prevention by, in front of public places, adding inspirational messages like you will see now out front here of your board meeting room. When we got the call to participate, I contacted the chairman and vice chairman, who enthusiastically supported this concept. In fact, you'll be seeing pictures, not in the too-distant future, of them kind of kicking off and spearheading our campaign this morning by being champions with laying out positive messages of hope. Messages like, "Be kind, everyone is fighting a battle you know nothing about." "Be an encourager, you are amazing, remember that." And so, we have members from our health education team here at the Department of Health and Human Services, as well as members of the Breaking Through Task Force. That's a task force that was formed out of Healthy Carolinians of the Outer Banks to address the stigma associated with mental health. We also have Artie Tillot, Superintendent of Schools, who's here showing his support, as well as two of the school's social workers. So, we hope to take this message countywide this month, so you may see more chalk with positive messages appearing throughout the county as we really try to bring awareness to suicide prevention. And also with that, I have a proclamation that I'd like to share and seek your approval today.
Yes, ma'am.
A proclamation, whereas suicide is a huge but largely preventable public health issue and is the 10th leading cause of death in the United States, and whereas the number of deaths by suicide continues to grow in our country, our state, and in Dare County, and whereas the 2019 Community Health Needs Assessment identified suicide as the 8th leading cause of death among residents in Dare County, and the 2nd leading cause of death in the age group 20 to 39 years of age, whereas for every suicide death, there are numerous family and friends whose lives are devastated emotionally, socially, and economically by said death, and whereas a lack of awareness, understanding, and stigma is prevalent globally in our nation and within our community, and whereas the Dare County Department of Health and Human Services is committed in its effort to promote awareness, understanding, and reduce the stigma associated with suicide, and whereas Let's Chalk About Mental Health is designed to support said understanding, reduce stigma, and encourage sharing through chalk artwork drawn on sidewalks and pavements, and whereas the Dare County Department of Health and Human Services, in collaboration with the Breaking Through Task Force and the Adult Mental Health Collaborative, are encouraging business owners, residents, and visitors to our community to raise awareness and to bring inspiration and words of wisdom to others who may need them by creating positive drawings, thoughts, and messages on our sidewalks and pavements. Now, therefore, the Board of Commissioners does hereby proclaim September 2019 Suicide Prevention Awareness Month in Dare County, and urges our citizens and interested groups to promote awareness of this debilitating public health issue and reach out to somebody with kind words of inspirations that might save a life.
So moved.
There's a motion on the floor by Commissioner House to, I'll get it right in a minute, to prove this proclamation. Is there a second? I'll second. Seconded by Commissioner Bateman. Any further discussion? Hearing none, then those in favor of that motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign. Motion carries unanimous. I got a tease that my fellow vice chairman, he was concerned about the chalk and defacing the property, and so I was thinking about, well, he must not have any grandkids because they draw on my driveway all the time, and a little bit of water takes care of it.
I really didn't know the county manager had an issue with that.
County manager does not have grandchildren, too. At least not yet.
But there's a lot of messages out there this morning, really look neat. I'm anxious to see the pictures that you took of it, so we're happy to be a part of it.
And we will come back at your October meeting and just do a quick slideshow showing you the work throughout the month.
Oh, great.
But thank you so much for helping us kick this off. We really appreciate it.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you, Sheila.
Chairman, item six on the agenda. Betty Corbin's here to present a proclamation on Constitution Week, or Constitution.
Ms. Corbin, thank you for being here.
Good morning. My name's Betty Corbin. I'm the Region of Virginia Dare chapter of our local DAR. I would like to address you on behalf of that chapter. Before I request my proclamation, I wanted to share with you that because of this presentation last year, and your editing and airing of this on your, on our local public TV station, our chapter won the state award for best broadcast coverage. Thank you.
All right.
We could not have done it without you. I took a video of it on the TV, transferred it to flash drive, sent it to the state, and we won best broadcast.
Well, congratulations.
Thank you.
I'm glad we were a part of it.
Yes, thank you. September 17 through 23 is Constitution Week. In 1955, the National Society Daughters of the American Revolution petitioned Congress with a resolution. This week of observance for the foundation of the American form of government was signed into law by President Dwight D. Eisenhower in 1956. George W. Bush officially declared the inception of Constitution Week in 2002. The commitment of DAR is to encourage study and educate the public about the Constitution, which was adopted by the American Congress of the Confederation on September 17, 17, excuse me, 1787. The Constitution is a living document that assures each citizen of freedoms Americans cherish and appreciate. As members of the Daughters of the American Revolution, it is our responsibility to keep our ancestors' legacy alive by promoting the ideals they fought valiantly to give their descendants. We have a proclamation that the county manager will read for your consideration.
This is a Constitution Week proclamation, whereas it is the privilege and duty of the American people to commemorate the 232nd anniversary of the drafting of the Constitution of the United States of America with appropriate ceremonies and activities, and whereas Public Law 915 guarantees the issuing of a proclamation each year by the President of the United States of America, designating September 17 through 23 as Constitution Week. Now, therefore, I, Robert Woodard, by virtue of the authority vested in me as Chairman of the Dare County Board of Commissioners, do hereby proclaim the week of September 17 through 23 as Constitution Week, and urge all citizens to study the Constitution and reflect on the privilege of being an American with all the rights and responsibilities which that privilege involves. Witness whereof, I have hereunto set my hand and seal and caused, I have hereunto set my hand and caused the seal of Dare County to be fixed this third day of September of the year of our Lord 2019.
Move to approve this.
Second. There's a motion on the floor about a vice chairman to approve this week, Constitution Week proclamation that's been seconded by Commissioner House. Any further discussion?
Just want to make a.
Yes, sir.
Ms. Betty, I appreciate all you do for the awareness of the heritage of not just our country, but here in Dare County, what is now Dare County. We were part of Currytuck County at that time, but we have some pretty compelling, as you know, Revolutionary War history around this area that not a lot of people know about. But I salute you guys for staying out in front and bringing us valuable things like this to make us aware, because, you know, school kids don't always get it. There's just a lot of stuff to cram in in a short amount of time.
Thank you.
So, thank you. Thank you for all your work.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Any further comments? Hearing none, those in favor of this motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign. Motion carries unanimous. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate you being here.
Chairman, item seven on the agenda is our South Ferry Channel dredging event for October of 2019. Brent Johnson's going to come forward. There's Brent. I don't know if you all have all met Brent. Brent's been here three weeks now, I think.
Gentlemen, hello.
Morning.
Brent's our Grant and Waterways manager and our project manager that we just brought on board, and we're glad to have him. And so, with that, Brent, I'll turn this back over to you.
Welcome this morning, Brent.
Thank you, sir. Thank you. So, what you have in front of you should be two documents. One is a survey done in July of the South Ferry Channel or Hatteras Inlet, and then the other one is the cost estimate that was done by the Corps of Engineers for this current dredging project. Total project cost is $423,120. Based off the MOA we have with the state, we are required, we will pay a quarter of that, and the state will pay the remaining three-quarters. So, that brings our allocated... So, that brings our allocated required funds from the county to $86,925,000. Now, that is budgeted already, and all we need from you guys is approval to submit those funds to the state to execute the dredging in October.
So moved.
Second. All right. We got a motion on the floor by Commissioner House, and it's been, I mean, Count, excuse me, it's been seconded by Commissioner Bateman and Ross. Any further discussion? All right. Hearing none, then those in favor of this motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign. Motion carries unanimous.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Boy, that was easy after three weeks, me and him, wasn't it Brent?
Not too bad.
You got a home run, man.
All right, I like it.
Thank you. Appreciate all your work.
Item 8 is our consent agenda. On the consent agenda, you have the approval of the minutes, you have the resolution to partner with the U.S. Census Bureau and the State of North Carolina, and you have a road request for Maid Marian Court in Manio.
Move to approve.
Motion on the floor by Commissioner House to approve the consent agenda as presented. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by the vice chair. Any further discussion? Hearing none, those in favor of that motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign. Motion carries unanimous.
Next are your board appointments. First, you have the Nursing Home Community Advisory Council. The terms expire for Mary Pendle, Linda Putton, and Pam, Suzie Walters. Melissa McCarner has resigned. You have an application on file for Richard Burris and Amber Jennings. Mary Pendle and Pam Walters would like to be reappointed at least two vacancies until the council finds replacements.
I'd like to make a motion to reappoint Mary Pendle and Suzie Walters, and I would also like to hold off until the next meeting. We still have one more application pending, so we'll hold off on appointing the next two people.
Okay. Thank you, Commissioner Tobin. Commissioner Tobin has a motion on the floor. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner House. Any further discussion? Hearing none, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign. Motion carries unanimous.
And then for your upcoming appointments, you have no appointments in October. In November, you have the Older Adult Services Advisory Council, you have one term, and in December, you have one term for the Albemarle Commission, five terms for the Equalization and Review Board, and three terms for the Special Motor Vehicle Evaluation Review Committee.
I do have one correction, I think.
Okay.
The December appointment to the Albemarle Commission. Given that we had gone through a couple of months ago, complete rewrite revision and approval of new bylaws, I believe, and I'm going from memory here, that we reestablished the term cycle, and I've sent a note off to my colleagues there to confirm whether or not the term for Howard Swain, who was appointed as an at-large from Dare County, is actually expiring this December, or whether it was granted one more year, because we sort of did a wipe the slate, restart during the middle of this year. So, I will get back and confirm that.
We'll find out before December.
Yes.
Okay. Great. Thank you, Commissioner.
That would be your agenda, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, county manager. That brings us to item 10, as county managers' business and commissioners' business, and I would ask Commissioner Ross if he would mind kicking it off today.
I really don't have anything, Mr. Chairman. I've been watching the storm, obviously, and that's been dominating all of my thoughts recently. I will simply say, one quick note, at the convocation ceremony that some of us attended and saw the launch of the 2019-2020 school year, I'm smiling, Artie, we had quite the event, very, very inspired, very celebratory in nature, and the excitement and teamwork demonstrated clearly was quite moving. So, I thank you, I thank Superintendent Farley, your colleagues, for an outstanding event, and for kindly inviting us to attend and participate. Thank you.
Absolutely. Thank you, Commissioner Ross. Commissioner House?
Same thing with the hurricane and everything going up. I really don't have a whole lot. I've been kind of tied up with that, as you can imagine, like everybody else. The Marine Fisheries Commission did put into effect the Amendment 2 on flounder fishing, and have put out the proclamations closing it for recreational, and commercial will have four weeks of pound adding, and that's about it. So, we are addressing those issues as far as looking very closely on what the economic impacts will be to Dare County, as we are anticipating of being fairly devastating to some of our smaller fishing communities. So, we're keeping a close eye on that and coming up with lots of ideas to help in that situation. And I do want to say that if, with this, with Hurricane Dorian, with the evacuations, please take heed, and if you can, evacuate, please. This storm has been extremely devastating to the Bahamas, although it will be lesser of a storm hopefully by the time it gets up here, but still, it will still be a devastating storm. So, please take heed, evacuate if you can, and be safe on the roads as you are leaving, and Godspeed to us all, and hopefully it won't hurt us or impact us as bad as what we are projecting it will be. And my hearts and prayers are out to the Bahamas right now, looking at the data that's been coming out of the Grand Bahama Island. It is absolutely total destruction. You have palm trees with no palms on them, they're just sticks sticking out of the ground. You have houses that have been totally eliminated, even strong structures have even been totally damaged and devastated as well. So, my hearts and prayers go out to them as well. So, take heed, this is a serious storm. That's all I have.
Thank you, Commissioner House. Vice Chairman?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to say thanks to Jamie and Daniel, representing 25 years of service to Dare County, and to our employee of the month, James DeGraw. Let them know that we certainly appreciate their time in Dare County and their service. Also, I'd like to mention, as did Commissioner Ross, the school convocation, that basically is the kickoff of the school year. I would encourage everybody who's seeing, listening, or sitting in here that has not been to one of these, to please attend it, because it is truly entertaining to see the creativity that the various schools come up with in their competition with one another, friendly competition with one another, is really something to see. And whoever came up with the idea of making a wave out of a blue tarp material and having somebody come through it on a skateboard like they were surfing ought to get an Emmy or whatever, a Farley, ought to get a Farley Award, because the, and that's another thing, the giving of the Farley Awards for various things is kind of interesting, that the superintendent aptly named after himself. It's all done in fun, and it's really something to see. I think you would be thoroughly entertained and encouraged by the creativity that you see coming from our schools. With regard to Dorian, I think everybody is glued to TV and know what's coming. Our emergency manager, Drew Pearson, has a way of summing things up really well, and he says hide from the wind and run from the water. And that pretty much succinctly says it all. But to everyone in the county, please be careful, do what your heart and your mind tells you to do on this thing, and be safe. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Chairman. Commissioner Bateman?
Yes, sir. I also went to the same as Wally and the chairman and Rob Ross at the school system, and I had a blast. I mean, it was like very good acting, some singing, like I said, the wave action, and this guy took a skateboard and surfed down this wave that they made, and I was, I mean, it was just amazing. We're sitting right there. Good camaraderie with a lot of folks, and I really had a great time. I will also tell you from a very wise Kitty Hawker that I talked to last night, and he said, just use common sense when it comes to a hurricane, you know, listen to your heart and use common sense. I would also remind everybody, we're coming off a king tide, which means that it's, everything's lined up perfectly, or was just a couple of days ago, and so, we need to take heed. In my backyard this morning, the tide was about as high as it's been, and if it comes up to sound, we're all in trouble. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Count?
Yeah, there's a lot of water and the sound there. I've always kind of marveled at the vulnerability there on Hatteras at the P. Island Bird Observatory. I mean, you can, as you're passing by there, you're looking, your eye level, there's not a lot of protection there. About a mile south of Wigan Hiller Bridge, same condition. You can't be complacent in something like this. You know, I was a little surprised at one of the local radio reports that seemed to downplay this storm a little bit, which to me is just bizarre. You've got to take it seriously. My question to that would be, how can you take a storm that was category 5, and as it predicted to move north, and it's just going to dissipate to nothing? Wind, maybe so. If you'll remember Hurricane Isabel, September 2003, it took the ocean days to calm down. So, the winds can drop out, but the ocean, already the waves at Diamond Shoals Buoy, which is about 14 miles out, 25 feet, don't let your guard down. That's, we should know better. Take it seriously. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Tobin?
I had the opportunity earlier this week to attend the dedication of a new historical plaque right at the entry to Fort Raleigh, and it recognizes Wachem Gons, who was a very interesting character. Wachem Gons was a scientist and a mineralologist in Europe, and he lived in Prague in the Czech Republic. He came across on Sir Walter's very first trip here to the lost colony, or to Roanoke Island, there was no colony then, and the plaque commemorates him. He was the first Jewish person to have ever come to the New World. He was also the first Czech Republic citizen that came to the New World. But what I find really interesting, he was also the first scientist that ever came here, and he came here and actually set up a science lab on the north end of the island, and they have found some clues as to where that lab was, and there's further excavations that are going to be going on in that area. It was really nice. The Honorable Ambassador Steve King from the Czech Republic was here to do the dedication, and it was really a good time, and it was very well attended. Echoing some of the same sentiments that my fellow commissioners have had, prayers for the people all the way from Freeport in the Bahamas to Marsh Harbor, I have a friend who's talked to people in Marsh Harbor, and the marinas there are completely wiped out. A lot of the residents there have had severe damage, and in Freeport, it's just a mess, a total mess. But prayers to all the people down there. Also, I don't know if any of you have heard, but there's also been a very tragic boating fire in California, where I believe 29 people have lost their lives. Just prayers to all those people, it's really sad. But on a happy note, today's my little sister's birthday, Janet, so I'd like to wish my sister a happy birthday.
Brownie Boing.
Congratulations.
That's all I got.
Thank you, Commissioner Tobin. One final comment myself, and that is, we will have a control group meeting at 1:00 this afternoon, and I will make sure our public information officer is very diligent about getting those bulletins out, so we will keep you totally informed about what's taking place in the county. Once again, I reiterate going to www.readync.org for any tips and information that you have, and certainly go online with Dare NC for any updates there, but we will be getting a bulletin right out after our control group meeting. With that being said, county manager, you're on deck.
Two things real quick. You have before you a contract, it's called the Spatial Contract, it's for the pictometry software that we use, over in the tax office, that's the 3D photos that you all have seen. It's a renewal, it's before you, because it's a multi-year contract, and you have to approve any multi-year contracts. It's been reviewed by me, been reviewed by staff, and it's ready to go, subject to your approval.
Pleasure to the board.
Motion to approve.
Motion by Commissioner Tobin to approve, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by the vice chair, as well as Commissioner Count, and I believe Commissioner Ross, didn't you just second that as well? So, any further discussion? Hearing none, those in favor of that motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign. Motion carries unanimous.
Just one little update on something that we've been working on at staff level. We've been working hard to try to get an inventory of all the property that is owned by Dare County. We'll go to our staff at our staff meeting next week to let them look at the list, we have a spreadsheet now with all that set out on it, and tell us what they need, what they don't need, what they think they might have future plans for, and the idea is, when we get done with this, is to find out what, if any, excess property we have. Do we have stuff we don't need, we don't want, whatever, and then come back to you and talk to you about, you know, what do we do with that? We've got, you would not believe how many parcels of land that we've acquired over the year through tax proceedings or whatever else that we don't even know that we have. And so, anyway, that's in the process. If you hear any comments from staff or anybody about that, that's what we're working on with the idea to plan for the future for what we need, and plan for the future for what we don't need as well.
Okay. Thank you, county manager. I'm going to come back to you under consent agenda with concerning the road request. There was some controversy with, there were supposed to be three particular roads under that, and I know a portion of one of the courts was pre-approved, or lane, and we had some conversation late in the week, and I believe our clerk did some research. Can you bring us up to date with those three specific roads, and what the deal is on, I believe, the one, was it a drive, what was the name of that lane?
Carolina Court.
No, something else, Commissioner.
I'll give you the, and I'll, Cheryl will give you the detail if you want more, but this was brought to us by DOT, we didn't seek it out.
Right.
And they came to us seeking to add to a road request that we had done previously. Through the week, back and forth with them, we were trying to clarify what they wanted and what they were asking us to do, so that when we came to you, we had it right, we weren't having to undo it or fix it or whatever. At the end of the day, after they did their research and went through all the road requests, went through the petitions and things that they had, they sorted it back down, eliminated the other road, if you will, and told us that all that we needed to include in this time was Maid Marian Court. And so, that's why it's on here, and whatever the name of that other road is, is not, it's because they told us to take that off. Is that correct? Cheryl?
Yeah. I know that, I know that it's.
What was it?
Dogwood. It was Dogwood. Yes, Dogwood. And I know that it's been worked very hard in those neighborhoods to get that street on there, and they have been working hard. If I'm not out of order, I'd like to ask Ken, Ken, would you come forward and, as a resident of that area, to explain some of the work that he's done, and, because there were supposed to be a total of three streets, Ken, is that correct?
Yeah, the three streets are Sherwood Drive, Maid Marian Court, and Dogwood's West, which is part of our subdivision. Almost 22 months ago, we propositioned the DOT to take those three streets over. They gave us some particulars that we had to do. We spent about $25,000 to get cleaned up, to what they need done. I was told a week or so ago that Sherwood Drive had been approved previously by the commission before, but that was the only street that was listed. I talked to Randy Midget, Alan Moran, and they were aware that Maid Marian Court and Dogwood's West would be added on this resolution. I don't know why they took Dogwood's West off. It's always been a part of our subdivision. There is a street that you come in off of the oaks that's called Dogwood's, but the developers of our subdivision extended that road to make Dogwood's West. I don't know if you can do it, but if you have to send this resolution that you've approved, Maid Marian Court, if you could put some kind of amendment on there that Maid Marian Court, if you could put some kind of amendment on there that you also approved Dogwood's West, and if there's any problem, to let you know why. Is that the street they told you to take off?
What they told us, they told us to take off the Dogwood's West, that the petition didn't show it on it, there was no link listed, and that the signatures that they had didn't include the people that lived along that street. And so they said, pull it off of the petition, and so that's what we did.
Okay, well, it's listed in our original position to do the whole subdivision. I've got that in writing, sent up by our engineers, so I don't know what to do.
I'll tell you what we'll do, Ken. If you can help us and provide us with that info, then what we'll do, we've already moved forward on this Marion.
Right.
But what we'll do is we'll, if you can provide us with that information, we can go back to N C DOT and request or ask them to explain why that wasn't included so that we can move forward and try to push this along to see why that wasn't approved.
Well, we've been working on it so long, I guess a few more months won't matter. DOT moves very swiftly evidently.
If you get with me next week, we'll sort it out.
Yeah, I can get it to you. Bring it to your office.
I'd be fine.
Okay. Thank you very much for your time, gentlemen.
Thank you, Ken. Appreciate it. Does that complete yours, County Manager?
Yes, sir.
I'll ask Public Information Officer Dorothy Hessler if she has anything for us this morning.
I'd just follow up, as the manager said, the emergency operations center is activated. We're functioning using the Joint Information Center, which is where we, all the agencies, the towns, the sheriff, the park service come together to issue our information. We're updating the website, using social media. We'll put another bulletin, Bulletin Two, out this afternoon after the control group meeting. Just one more note, and y'all have all alluded to this, but I always am surprised, I stopped to get fuel yesterday when I left the E O C, the Emergency Operations Center, and I saw a gentleman that I know who said, oh, you know, by the time it gets here, it's only going to be a two or a three. You know, and I still think there's so many people that think in terms of that Saffir-Simpson scale, and as it becomes, it's not a major hurricane anymore, they think, oh, well, you know, the threat's not there. But that's only based on wind speed, and that's what I would like to tell people again and again. Don't look at the category number that's assigned, that doesn't take flooding into account.
Absolutely.
And flooding is our greatest concern.
Absolutely.
So that's all I have.
Thank you, Dorothy, for pointing that out, and I appreciate that. Our finance director, Dave, you're looking better all the time.
Much better.
Dave is at E O C right now. We asked him to go over there this morning, and Sally's sitting in for Dave and Sally. It's always a pleasure to have you here. You have anything good for us this morning, other than your pretty smiling face?
Yes, sir.
All right. Thank you so much. That brings us to the end of our meeting, and I would ask if someone would entertain a motion to adjourn until 5:00 PM on September the 16th.
So moved.
Motion by Commissioner House, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by the vice chairman. Any further discussion? Hearing none, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign. Motion carries unanimous.